Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Xano Girro, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
And we will move to the people in the room for introductions next and then go to online.
Erica Myllo, Board Leader.
Craig Jones, Senate Director for the Department of Customs.
I will earn the District Board chair.
And introductions for those of us joining us online.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Okay, we don't have, can't hear you.
How about now? No, no, perfect.
We're working on it.
Anything? Hello?
That's interesting. So one moment, everyone, while we work this out.
Test. Hello? Test.
We do not hear you. Let's see if we can hear Brian.
Brian, give it a go.
You guys hear me?
Nope, can't hear Brian either.
No. I can.
Mark, can we see?
Hello?
Recording in progress.
Hello? Test, test, test. Test. Hello, test.
So also, when I, I am logged on here on the Zoom so that I can see comments if there are any in the chat, but I don't see Brian, the sheriff, etc.
I'm not sure. Some settings.
Oh, I can hear Jeff typing.
Hello?
Hey, there it is.
There we go. Perfect. Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
And Brian Lee, Emergency Manager.
Commissioner, if we can just interject real quick, or if I could just interject real quick, I want to connect with John and Erica regarding the concern that you brought up about not being able to see, we're seeing participants, for example, the sheriff and Brian Lee on the screen, but when you look at them on our Zoom interface from our computers, we don't see, or at least I don't see the sheriff or Brian.
Yeah, and I don't see the board, the board camera either. No, on our computers.
Yeah, on here, yeah. It would be interesting to try restarting the meeting. Erica, I missed the link from the website, is that? I don't, I don't think that's, that's it. It's more like a setting in Zoom, perhaps, would be my theory, but I haven't run into this one, so. I think potentially we could continue with being able to see folks on there.
I'm just, I'm kind of wondering if there are two separate, if we're on two separate meetings. Yeah, so.
Well, I wonder if I should, because I'm the one who's not seeing them.
Well, none of us are, Erica.
Yeah.
So maybe we should all log off and then use the link from the agenda. That's the one I'm using.
Yeah. Okay. I was using the one from the Zoom site, so it's possible.
So can you post that in the chat so people know?
Okay, yeah, it is two different meetings because this one just ended and I see that one up there still going, so.
All right, I'm gonna try to the website.
So which one should we be using? I don't.
So are we, are we using the one off of, that's at the top of the agenda that says Zoom link?
I clicked on the board researcher website, I didn't go to the agenda.
Yeah, let's.
Can we need to use the pub, what's been posted as the public link? Okay, and so where is that located at?
On the board commissioner's website, under our public post review, on Facebook or on Twitter.
So Benton County's website. I've lost all connectivity, so I'm just not good with it.
Okay, and then where do we go?
Okay.
There we go. So we're gonna, oh, okay, weird, that like. Two different Zoom links.
And then if you scroll down. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, now I see the sheriff twice.
Commissioner, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I went, I went to the actual website, the county's website and logged on from the calendar link.
Yes, that's where we are now. So it looks like perhaps we just have two different links. One posted on our website and one posted on our agenda, so we will make sure we get that fixed for the future.
Sounds good.
So if we go back to the, sorry, the board commissioner's page. And actually, go ahead and go back. So if you click on, is that what you clicked on? Yeah, this is a different page than I thought, I'm sorry. And just do Benton County Board of Commissioners search.
So did you go? Let me see, to this webpage? That takes us to the agenda and that will give you the one we had. So I just went to the calendar, that's where I am.
I've never done it this way.
Yeah, so let's see, I went to homepage, calendar. Oh, the front page calendar, not the one under. I just clicked that link right there on the second. That's a different calendar. Yeah, our website is a hot mess, huh? Yes. The other calendar just has the agenda.
We'd put, push for.
Might need to help with the audio settings for.
Yep, okay, yep, so mics are off. Muted and mics off.
And his sound is also off on the machine, yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to make sure we don't have too many pieces of Zoom running, I don't believe so. Will be.
Thank you for letting me drive.
Oh, thank you. So is everybody on the same page upgrading the bias now?
All right, should we try again?
Camera.
All right. And are we recording?
Well. Sorry.
It's okay.
Recording in progress.
Perfect, all right. Here we are again, we already did introductions. So let's move on to announcements. I don't believe that there are any announcements today. Hearing none, we'll move to comments from the public. If you would like to make a public comment, you can have up to three minutes. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment? See, no one. Is there anyone online that would like to provide public comment? If so, please unmute yourself and/or put your name in the chat. Seeing none. We will move on to review and approve the agenda. I don't believe there are any changes to the agenda. Then I will consider that approved. We will move into the work session first up. COVID update from Department Operations Center with Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. And I think we are waiting for them to rejoin us after restarting the meeting. They might have the other link. My apologies, everyone. Did anyone notify them?
Sure, let's.
April and Suzanne aren't on. Hopefully they will be joining us momentarily. Just texted April. Perfect, thank you. It's always amazing to me how many little ways things can go wrong with this technology.
It's always something different, too.
Yeah.
We get one thing ironed out and then.
There's something else.
Something else, yeah.
Plot twist. Yep. So is there anything else quick that we could do? Everything else is pretty time consuming. So you, sure, would you be amenable to moving to the consent calendar, commissioners?
Sure.
Okay, so I actually have a couple corrections. Let's see, on page 33 of the electronic packet. And it was for the January 18th minutes. There is a date that is incorrect. It says 2022 and it should say 2021. Let me just get to that page and read it.
I had the same thing, but on page 42.
So also page 42, so the one I found on page 33 says, "Kirth reviewed that the board removed the South J-Sub site, blah, blah, blah." "November 30th, 2022, followed by decisions in December 2022 to proceed with the new courthouse and co-locate with the District Attorney's Office." We split forward in time. Yes. In order to make those decisions. And then on page 35, under public comment, it says Jeff Hollinger. Jeff here spelled J-E-F-F, his name is actually spelled G-E-O-F-F. And then Commissioner Malone, you said you found a typo on page?
42, the January 22nd. 21st minutes. And same, same thing, dates. Second paragraph. Drop. Site dropped in March and says 2022, should be 2021.
Got it. I have one correction also, okay. Page 70 for the April 19th, 2022 minutes. Guest, where it says Rona Foster, it should be R-A-N-A, good catch. Any other corrections? Not for me. Seeing none. I do want to mention that this was a really big undertaking of our staff. I mean, we have one, two, three, four, five, six minutes to approve. The past couple of minutes, we've had almost just as many, so I just really want to thank staff for their great work on hammering all of these out. And in addition, the quality of the minutes are very good, too. I really appreciate that the conversations are captured well, so thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve with those changes.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. And let's see, let me go back. Progressions next, but I think both April and Suzanne are here. Perfect, that is where I'm heading now to check. Okay, all right, well, we can go back in the agenda to the work session with our COVID update with Department Operations Center, Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. Welcome, sorry about the confusion this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner, good morning. And I just, before handing it off to April, want to express my appreciation to the Board of Commissioners and County Administrator for this ongoing update opportunity. I know even though as we, as we hear socially, many people have moved beyond the pandemic, it is still, as you know, very much still with us and I'm very proud to be a part of a community that wants to receive this data and seems to respond to it in ways that help keep everyone a little more safe. So thank you for that and I'll turn it over to April.
Thank you Suzanne. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Joe, and everyone here today. I do have some slides that I'd love to share. I only, I'm sorry I didn't submit them in advance. I'm only offering these because I had a chance to present to our Correla City Council last night and sometimes having visuals now and then are a nice accompaniment. So is it okay if I share my screen?
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, can you let me know when you can see that?
We can see that.
Thank you so much. So today I've got your COVID update with some visuals, as you see. I'm just gonna go over the basics situational update, we'll look at some data. Have a review of our key messages around COVID-19. Talk about what it is that Public Health and our partners are doing. And just a little bit of news on the, on the horizon that I'd love to keep you apprised of. So you know, what I, what I hope to do with the situational update is really to provide an impression of some of the many pieces of information that we review and synthesize to understand where we are, where we may be headed and how we come to the, these, these updates and how we advise you, our county leaders. And these examples that I'll provide, you know, any, any one or two taken alone may be over, oversimplifications. We know that there are, for example, many more impacts of COVID-19 than hospitalizations and deaths. First, you know, sometimes it's nice to go back to 30,000 feet and look at where we've been and where we are. And these are the reported cases by month, you can see our huge spike or what I like to refer to sometimes as the unicorn horn of, of Omicron, the first Omicron wave with over 6,000 reported cases. And since then, we've already experienced a couple of more subvariant waves. Moving on to the seven day case rate, this is still a bit zoomed out, doesn't look at recent data in detail, but you can see that while we've plunged down from that initial Omicron wave and came below that 200 mark and that I, I put a red line there to signify that's where we'd make the jump in the CDC community level to at least the, the medium CDC community level or yellow. And if we also were to meet different hospitalization metrics, we would move into the, the high level. So you can see we've been pretty consistently from around April on above the 200 cases per 100,000. And I also like to use this graph to illustrate the, the, the fact that cases are, are underreported. So if you look over to the left where it says 1,710, around then, rather before that period, because PCR testing was so prominent, well, we estimated that about one in four COVID cases were, were being detected. And then with the overwhelming nature of the, the cases, the number of cases that came in around Omicron, we estimated about one in 14. And now with just the preponderance of, of, of rapid tests, which are a very useful tool, would come with the trade-off of, of not having as much information come with them. We can now estimate that only about one in 30 cases is reported, so looking at, at this chart here gives us an impression of where we are, but it certainly doesn't tell us the whole story. For the next, this slide is just a zoomed in portion of the last one and it just shows you in a little more detail that while we've, we've had some variation since about mid-April, we've really been hovering back and forth between the 200 and 350, 360 per 100,000 range. And I, I think you'll be pleased, as I am, to see that the reported cases have continued to reduce and our last week of data, starting the 24th of July, we're right around 200 cases per 100,000 and we're certainly encouraged by that news, even though we know that it's an underreporting. Now, another way that we look at, at trends and get that impression of where we are with transmission is through wastewater surveillance. And I took one of the wastewater surveillance graphs that, that we received and I, I doctored it to, to give a little bit of information as to where, where the signals are. And so anything under about 6.25 is considered low under the green line. And then you can see from the orange line to green is moderate and so on and so forth. So the wastewater surveillance has been an accurate early predictor of rises in recorded cases. So in July 2021 and January 2022, those rises accurately predicted the Delta and Omicron surges. those rises accurately predicted the Delta and Omicron, uh, surges. Um, each about three weeks before recorded cases began to rise significantly. And so you can see, um, in, uh, before the BA-two and BA-five waves, we just had a, a, a one long, uh, sweep of, of rising wastewater signals. Um, our, our cases, uh, weren't, uh, consistently rising with these. Um, because, you know, it, it's important to keep in mind that it's difficult to associate the size of the increase with the size of the, um, spike in recorded cases. What this will tell us is there's a lot of activity and we can expect some increase. And if you'll notice at the, at the far right of, uh, of the graph, that the, um, the signals that we've been receiving are, are coming down. And, um, those last few are, are bringing us closer to that moderate level and out of strong and, uh, we, that along with, uh, fewer recorded, reported cases, um, are encouraging pieces of information. I just put this, um, this chart together, uh, this morning, uh, to just give and, uh, give you all a sense of where we are in terms of variance. Um, I usually get questions about what's, what's on the, on the horizon and, and what's coming next. And uh, right now, I, we don't see any, anything new sort of, uh, coming in and out competing the current variants. It doesn't mean that it's not going to happen, certainly, but at this time, there, uh, there isn't anything that we're waiting to come and sort of s-sweep, sweep over our way. Um, BA-five has been, uh, dominant here, um, for a little while now and, uh, uh, barring, you know, something new happening, we hoped that, uh, we'll have a period of, of calm. Uh, you all know about the CDC community levels, um, that it incorporates the cases, new hospitalizations and the percentage of beds occupied by COVID patients. Um, we, uh, last, at every Thursday, uh, CDC updates the, uh, their website and the levels. And, uh, we were moved last Thursday to a medium or a yellow after spending a couple of weeks in the high and red. And, um, as our, our numbers continue to fluctuate, I wouldn't be surprised if we see some, some moving back and forth. So, um, it's good to keep a close eye on, on this. Um, next, uh, this, this is a statewide hospitalization, um, uh, graph and you can, uh, I, I, I appreciate this uh, because you can really see the, um, you can see the waves in this and how they impact hospitalizations. The first big bump you see somewhere over, um, January twenty twenty-one, uh, was the beta wave. And then that next little bump around May is alpha. That huge one was that, uh, delta, uh, wave. And then of course, Omicron. And you can even visualize the two, uh, little waves over here, uh, smaller waves, um, with BA-two and BA-five. Um, I'll also add that the, the rate of ED visits for, uh, COVID has declined in the last, uh, week. The absolute, uh, number of ED visits for COVID has also declined. However, the total number of emergency department visits remains very high. So a lot of people seeking care right now. Fewer proportion of those, uh, for possible COVID nineteen. I always find it necessary to, to remind myself, uh, as a, a numbers person and, and all of us that so many loved ones have been lost. And in all of the data, we should never lose sight of the fact that behind every number is a person, um, a person with, with people who, who love them. Um, so here are the numbers, uh, as they stand, uh, recently for, uh, deaths attributed to COVID nineteen. Um, uh, so behind heart disease and cancer and both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, COVID nineteen was a leading cause of, of death and, um, and in every, uh, age group fifteen years and older, COVID nineteen was one of the top five causes of death. This is all to say that there's no doubt that this virus continues to cause, uh, disruption and heartache. Next, I, I have some information on vaccination. Um, uh, we're at seventy-four percent of all residents, all ages with the primary series complete. And I think it's important to consider that primary series because it does continue to provide a, a, a good level of protection from severe illness and death for, for most people. Um, I've had, uh, uh, just about seventy percent of, uh, eighteen and up who are eligible get a booster, their first booster. And then you can see in this, uh, graphic, the average doses a day. Um, those second boosters, they've come down and, and recently, uh, popped back up. Um, finally, I'll, I'll share that for, uh, the age group six months to four years. Here in Benton County, we've had, uh, thirteen point four percent or four hundred eighty-eight little ones go in for their first dose. While that might not seem like much, it's, it's a really good proportion of, of kiddos, um, and, and, uh, is higher than, than most places around. Uh, really, really happy to see people, uh, protecting their, their kiddos. Next, um, I'm gonna go into some of our key messages. Um, we all know that, uh, required masking is gone. Um, however, a lot of people will continue to mask to protect themselves and others. It's important to assess, uh, your circumstances and make decisions based on, uh, your risk, the risk of your family, um, and the activity that you're doing. And of course, uh, you've seen this before, check the weather. Um, it, it, it's sometimes, uh, the sun is shining, we've got low cases, nothing, nothing new on the horizon. And, uh, we can, we can take some of those layers off. And other times, uh, we need to, to get our, our slickers and our hats. And, um, so it's important to, to keep up with the resources, check out, uh, OHA, uh, the Benton County website, uh, CDC, um, and see where we are and act accordingly. Now, these messages haven't changed. Um, you, you probably know them by heart as, as I do. Um, we want to ensure that everyone understands that, that some measures to protect themselves and to protect our community, um, include being up to date with COVID nineteen vaccination. And when deciding to mask, to wear the most protective mask that you can tolerate. For example, for myself, I don't like wearing an N-ninety-five because it pulls my hair and it hurts my ears. So I wear a K-ninety-five. And if a cloth mask or a surgical mask is what works for you and you, when you decide you want a mask, then as long as you can wear it consistently, uh, wear that mask. Um, and then using rapid tests. It's, it's a great tool. It's not a perfect tool, but it's a great tool. And it's a, it's a, it's a good approximation of being, uh, infectious in, in the moment. Um, so before large gatherings, meeting with vulnerable individuals, when traveling or feeling ill, use those rapid tests. We still have them in county locations. Um, and I'd be happy to share more information about that if you have questions. Um, seek out well-ventilated space, spaces. Of course, uh, we always wash our hands often, even if we're not having a pandemic. And, uh, finally, to stay home with sick, uh, when you're sick, even if you think it's not COVID. Some of our, some of our activities I, I want to share with you is, is, uh, we work hard, all, all of this with a focus on equity. We work hard to ensure access to vaccines, tests, therapeutics, uh, protective masks. Um, our team, eh, provide, provides incredible outbreak support to long, long-term care facilities and other high-risk locations. We have, uh, a great communications team and conduct a lot of outreach to community-based organizations, uh, homeless service providers, K-through twelve schools, OSU, many, many more. Uh, put out radio, print ads, home mailers, social media. Um, you got it. And then, uh, uh, of course, we're all, we're, we're not just waiting for CDC to tell us where we are. We're, we're in the data. Every day, we're tracking, uh, cases, hospitalizations. We're looking at, uh, the variants that we have locally, looking at wastewater surveillance and looking abroad. Always. Finally, you may have heard in the news that, um, uh, the bivalent vaccine, uh, bivalent just means, uh, two, two sources included. Uh, so, uh, the bivalent, uh, booster vaccine from Moderna should be reduced some, uh, sorry, introduced sometime this fall. Um, and that includes, um, both the original Omicron, uh, sorry, the original COVID nineteen strain as well as, uh, Omicron BA-one. Um, and, uh, while we shouldn't expect this to be, uh, you know, a, a silver bullet or a miracle change, a game changer, uh, by any means, it is expected to, uh, to provide some really good, uh, protection and be an improvement from, uh, what we currently have. So that's all I have for you. I am, uh, so glad to, uh, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, April. We appreciate that, uh, um, all that information. Questions, comments for April? Uh, Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, um, appreciate the, the, uh, slides, April. That's, uh, helpful to, uh, see trends rather than just get uh, current, uh, numbers. So, uh, that was, that was helpful. Uh, thinking about the, the last slide and the, um, Moderna bivalent and, um, so fall is coming and it's not that far away. Um, wondering about, uh, uh, number of months in between, uh, boosters and I, um, uh, I can see, uh, some confusion with people, well, it's been six, eight months or I haven't had a booster. Should I get the, the, the regular one in September, October or, uh, wait uh, for the, um, bivalent, e-even though, uh, it, it, it may be a little longer time, uh, number of months, uh, between, um, boosters. And, uh, I know we're getting probably information on a daily basis, but, um, so whatever answer you have now and next time we see you, uh, if you have more information, that'd be great.
Thanks for the great question, Commissioner Malone. Yes, it, it is a source of, uh, concern and, and confusion among many folks. Um, and I believe that, so, w-when someone wants a booster, um, we don't have a, a, a rotating, uh, timeframe for people to get additional boosters at this time. And I, I do think that may change at some point in the future. So if someone is fifty or older, has a certain immunocompromising, uh, conditions, they've been eligible for a second booster. Uh, people under fifty or who don't meet those other criteria are not eligible for a second booster at this time. And I believe, uh, based on the latest, uh, reports and, and, um, meetings I've attended, is that, uh, that, that recommendation may stay that, that, that individuals under fifty won't be eligible for a second booster of the current, uh, vaccine uh, because of the anticipated bivalent booster being available soon. That way, you know, there's, there's less risk of someone running into having only a few weeks or a month or, or two between their booster shots, which, uh, could not have as much as an effect on, on immunity. Um, so, uh, we'll see how it plays out. Uh, right now, uh, it looks like we may have, uh, no additional, uh, boosters for under fifty until, uh, the, the Moderna product is approved or authorized, uh, for use, um, by, um, FDA and approved by CDC and OHA, which may happen in September or maybe October. Um, the, the information is, is still coming together at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, April. Have a wonderful day. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda topic, which is the update on the Habitat Conservation Plan for state forest lands. With us, we have Michael Curran, the West Oregon District Forester, and Mike Wilson, the State Forest Division Chief with Oregon Department of Forestry. Welcome.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Wyes, other commissioners, county staff. Uh, so for the record again, my name's Michael Curran. Um, the District Forester of ODF's West Oregon District.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Mike Wilson. I'm the State Forest Division Chief for ODF. Pleasure to be here this morning.
Yep. So kind of the reason we're here for you this morning, so I think it was back in May when we provided our annual update that we do every year for you. Um, you know, the question was made to us, if we could come back and do a presentation on kind of an update on our Habitat Conservation Plan. Um, in particular, the draft environmental impact statement that was recently issued to us from the, uh, federal services we're working with for the Habitat Conservation Plan. And then also kind of what we think the local impacts could be for Benton County as well. So, um, our plan was to kind of go through that for you. Um, and you guys should have gotten a handout from us in your packet. Okay. So, um, we're not gonna necessarily cover that bold item by a bold item. Um, I'm just gonna kind of cover a couple of key points from that. And then Mike can cover the draft environmental impact statement, um, and kind of the plan moving forward from there. So. And I also wanted to take advantage of this time, um, to try to get Mike Wilson in front of you. Um, I know you guys are used to working with Liz Dent. She was a longtime Division Chief for State Forest, Forest. Um, she recently left state service. Um, and I believe Mike is three, three months on the job now in this role?
Just about.
Okay. So, longtime State Forest employee for us, though, um, has a lot of experience. So we're excited to have him on board in this new role. So. Um, so with that, um, so under our current forest management plan, we, we operate under what we call take avoidance. Um, and really what that means is, uh, we need to avoid take of any listed or threatened and endangered species. Um, and this is a very costly model for us under our current forest management plan. And there's a lot of uncertainties, um, with this model as well. Um, first and foremost, it's a very expensive model. Um, we spend a lot of money on wildlife surveys, um, on any current and future planned timber sales, recreation activities, um. And if, if detections occur during these surveys, um, they can cause moderations to our simple timber sale plans and, and our recreation plans. Um, and then also this has a longer lasting impact on our management activities. Um, so if we, if we continue to have future species listed, um, it can impact their greatest permanent value, um, mandate that we've got, um, for managing state forest lands right now. So, which in turn can, um, have some impacts to the counties, right, with the revenues that we provide from the timber sales that we, that we harvest. So. Um, with that, uh, the Board of Forestry directed us to move forward with an HCP. Um, so with that, our Salem staff, um, did a, an analysis. Um, and back in October two thousand twenty, they presented those numbers on kind of an anal, an analysis of, um, what our harvest levels would be, uh, with an HCP and without an HCP. And they voted unanimously to move forward with, uh, trying to adopt an HCP. So, um, kind of what an HCP buys us is greater operational certainty with future listings. Um, because really what it does is, um, it's setting aside habitat for future listings, um, and then also setting aside available acres for us to harvest and conduct recreation activities, um, and other things that we're doing within state forests. So, from an operational standpoint, it gets us more certainty. And it's also better certainty with revenues to the counties and other various conservation men, that, uh, measures and, um, public values that are associated with state forests. So, some of the high points with an HCP. Um, so the HCP, there should be a map on that handout I provided you. It covers about six hundred and ninety thousand acres west of the Cascades. Um, it has coverage for seventeen terrestrial and aquatic species. Um, it also designates, as I mentioned earlier, habitat conservation and repair, riparian conservation areas, um, to enhance habitat for both types of covered species under the HCP. Um, you know, the current HCA and RCA configurations, um, that we submitted to the federal services that we're working with uh, make up about fifty percent of the total permit area. So roughly half of that, six hundred and ninety thousand acres. And then that other half would be available for harvests moving forward. So, you know, through the initial modeling that we did back in 2020, and it's evolved a little bit, but just so it's clear, you know, these are estimates. These aren't final numbers by any means, as we're still working through the process. We would see about an average of 225 million board, board feet a year cut in the 50 to 70 year term we would have with an HCP, which is on par with what we're doing right now annually. So, and then kind of concurrently with this, we'd have to have a new forest management plan in place to be able to implement the HCP. So our staff are also working on a new forest management plan as we work through the HCP process. So if the Board of Forestry decides to have us move forward with it and we get the permit from the federal services, then we have a new forest, forest management plan in place to be able to move forward. So before I get into Benton County specifics with some of the initial modeling, any questions on that? And I'll maybe see if Mike can cover anything that I glaringly missed at a high level.
I have one question, and that is how the riparian conservation areas will interact with the landscape scale, the private forest accord, riparian conservation rules, and whether the two processes bring the state lands and private lands more into a similar management approach? Or what's, what's the contrast there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it. And then I'll, I'll have Mike chime in. You know, for, for right now, they are two separate processes. And for myself, with the private forest court, I'm still getting up to speed with what the riparian measure outcomes are for that. But right now, they are two separate processes. You know, through the private forest accord, part of the, the goal of that is to get an HCP on private timberlands in the state of Oregon. But that is a separate process and potentially separate outcomes and what we are working on through state forests. I guess anything else to add or did I miss something?
No, I don't think you really missed anything. I, I think the main thing is that, you know, they, they are two separate processes. And this is a point of confusion for a lot of people, I think. The HCP that goes with the PFA will be its own thing. And there's no requirement that HCPs be similar or have similar outcomes, right? Each one is kind of unique. Currently, the measures in our HCP exceed to some degree the measures in the PFA in terms of buffer widths and so forth. However, they have a lot of the same process driven buffer requirements. So for instance, confluence of non-fish bearing streams to say fish bearing streams and such, having a larger buffer for part of that to increase shade to keep water cool. And so many of the, many of the functional components are the same, even though the buffer widths are a little bit different.
Okay.
That help you?
Yes, and I have one other, just a real technical question. The handout says 640,000 total acres, but I think you said 690,000. I just wanted to.
It is 640.
Forty, sorry.
Thank you.
I spoke.
Numbers.
I probably transposed my numbers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
So as far as just county specifics for Benton County, so as a reminder, within West Oregon District, as I typically share in our annual update. So as a district, we manage about 30, roughly 36,000 acres of state forest land. Of that 36,000 acres, 8,300 of that reside within Benton County. So under our current FMP, the amount of, of available acres that we have with no current constraints that we can actively manage sits at right around 3,500 acres. With the initial modeling that they did back in 2020, and again, estimates only, this is not the final number by any means, are actually available acres with no constraints will go up in Benton County up to 4,700. And this is not necessarily apples to apples with the various counties we interact with across state forests, across the state on the west side of the Cascades. But for West Oregon as a whole, we actually see either our acres stay somewhat similar to where they are now or actually go up like in the case for Benton County with an HCP. So primarily Benton County and Polk County are, are available acres for harvest will go up if an HCP were to get adopted with the estimated initial modeling that we completed.
So I would assume that part of that is just that we have very fragmented acreage here and that, that Benton Polk cluster and other areas, you've got much better habitat connectivity. Yes.
So, you know, but I, I, I think we're fortunate, you know, especially in Benton County, that we do have bigger blocks that we can set aside for HCAs where we kind of limit some of that fragmentation. And, you know, at times too, with our current model, sometimes, you know, that fragmentation is, is created as, you know, additional detections are taken and go from there. So, but yeah, no, so I, I think as a district, we're actually sitting pretty good from, from if we were to adopt an HCP standpoint to where we actually will see our, our available acres for harvest go up while still maintaining good quality habitat for the covered species. So again, like I said, just to reiterate, you know, these numbers are, are estimate only. We're still going through the process. But like I said, from the initial results, we're actually sitting fairly favorably within the West Oregon District with the counties that we interact with. So, and you know, our, our average annual harvest level for the district is around 12 million board feet. And, you know, looking at, you know, moving forward with, with that initial modeling is our, you know, our annual harvest would fluctuate a little bit. But on average, we would be right at still probably 12 million, maybe a shade more. Like I said, just with the initial numbers that we saw. So, and with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Mike to kind of talk through the draft environmental impact statement that the federal services provided and kind of next steps moving forward as far as timeframes. And then we'll take questions from there.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, so first of all, I'd like to frame up the, the EIS a little bit and the NIPA process. So adopting or issuing incidental take permits based on our HCP constitutes a federal action. And as such, they have to go through the National Environmental Policy Act process. So the EIS, the environmental impact statement that they put together really is set to frame the proposed action within a range of reasonable alternatives. Now, it's important to remember that this differs from the federal use of an EIS for when, say, the Forest Service is going to do something. And they have picked a number of alternatives that they might actually implement. And they use the process partly to help them pick which alternative works best for them. In this case, where you have a non-federal entity coming to the services and saying, here's our plan, there's no real range of alternatives in the actual selection. It is the proposed action. Typically, what is, in addition to that, there's the NOA action, which is normally just your management. For us, it's our management under our current forest management plan. And then the services are responsible for developing a range of alternatives, which they do primarily based on the public comment that they get through the initial scoping process. And that's really just to sort of set the stage for folks to realize that the, you know, it's basically the, the federal government's going to enter into this action, you know, issue these incidental take permits, allow for the implementation of this HCP. And it's a reasonable thing. It's not going to damage the human environment or anything else too, too terribly. So it tends to be somewhat general in its function. More important to the HCP itself will be the issuance of biological opinions. Each service, NOAA Fisheries and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will issue separate biological opinions for the species they cover. And that's where you'll see things like the level of incidental take that's expected balanced against the minimization and mitigation measures in the HCP. So that's very species centric and gets into a lot more detail on that issue or that subject than the environmental impact statement. So anyway, with, with that, you know, the draft EIS basically was based, they chose to adopt modeling that we had done for our comparative analysis in 2020 to frame up the alternatives for both the NOA action and for the proposed action, which is the HCP. Those alternatives, you know, that we, basically it showed that the HCP outperforms the NOA action alternative in terms of harvest volume and so forth. And also, you know, provides a pretty substantial protection for species. There wasn't a great deal of range in the other alternatives chosen or framed up by the services. One was an alternative that had increased riparian protections. And one was an alternative that had reduced conservation measures as well. And then there was another option that was alternative for, which was simply a reduced permit term. Our current term is for 70 years. This would have been for 50, and all it really did was take the NOA or the proposed action alternative and cut it off at 50 years. It wasn't remodeled or anything. So the results are really not, not terribly different on that one. And in fact, the results were not, there wasn't that much of a range of results on any of them. The NOA action alternative did consider that we would continue with the forest management plan undertake avoidance and would consequently result in future encumbrances on our management, both for currently listed species and then for upcoming listings too. And that's an important thing to consider is that we really did look at this for 17 species, some of which are not listed yet, but would have a very big impact for us if they were. And, you know, we've seen this play out time and time again. So the timeline for the draft EIS, so the draft EIS has already come out. That went through public comment, which ended June 1st. We, the services are assembling the comments on the draft EIS. And the responses to those comments will be part of the final EIS. The range of responses that could be in there could be, you know, thank you very much for your comment and it's not relevant. Or thank you very much for this comment. You make a good point and we adjusted our analysis or provided some clarifying information for that. That is up to the services to do and ODF has no part in because the EIS is not our document. In that same public comment process, period, we had released the draft HCP. And the draft, public comment on the draft HCP does belong to both the applicant and the services. And so we will be bringing a summary of that public comment to the Board of Forestry in September so that they can see it. We don't, our current look at it tells us that there's not a lot in there of substance that would cause us to change the HCP. And so we will likely move forward with the proposed action as, as is. That's of course up to the board. They could direct us to make changes or adjustments to it. If that happens, then there would be a delay in the timeline of getting the HCP just because it would take time to work all that through the process. And actually, if I might, I'll step back for just a moment and just talk about that process. One of the things that we did early on with this HCP, we've pursued several HCP efforts over the years. I, I think it's a lot of people know. This time, we really wanted to set it up for success. And so we had a steering committee of agency decision makers for both state and federal agencies that were involved in the actual technical crafting of the HCP. Then we have below that a scoping team of technical specialists that actually would put together these strategies. And then we also had a robust public engagement process as well. And so, which included not only public meetings open to the public to present information, but additional meetings as requested with stakeholders to help them better understand and to gather input. So it really is what got us here today. And if changes were suggested, we would take those changes back to that technical scoping team. We would be working through those to make sure that we got them right. And then, and as we move forward. So that's part of the time constraints and making any changes to the HCP. With the modeling results that Michael referred to, one of the things that we will be doing as we have our new FMP, which has to sort of encompass this HCP, we're working on the draft of that and we will be bringing modeling results early next year to the Board of Forestry. And these will be improved modeling results with updated data, better cost and price information for logging costs and also log prices and so forth. And just generally better spatial information as well. And there you're going to see a lot more detailed, really just higher quality outputs for volume estimates. Not that, not that we're saying that the modeling that was done for the comparative analysis was bad. It's just that this will be improved and reflect updated inventory and so on and so forth. And I, I want to make one more clarification on that. When Michael spoke to the 225 million feet, board feet that would be produced under the HCP. And that's similar to what we do now. That is similar to our harvest objectives now. For the 640,000 acres that are covered by this HCP, the current harvest objective that we plan for is between 220 and 230 million feet a year. And that's based on modeling that we did for those implementation plans. The actual harvest that has come off of that due to what we call overrun, which just means that it scales out at the mill as, you know, is the actual amount, right? You estimate with your model and your inventory, you estimate with your crews. And then when it finally gets to the mill, you get your final answer. And so a lot of folks are characterizing the 225 million feet as a drop from the current level. And that's comparing actuals to modeled numbers as opposed to comparing modeled numbers to modeled numbers. So that's, just want to put that out there. It's very important for us to remember, you know, apples to apples and not apples to oranges. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It's a helpful clarification, apples to apples, Commissioner Ogden.
Yeah, I just want to further make sure I'm understanding that. So typically, when you get the actual total harvest based on the mill footage, that tends to be higher than the model numbers?
Yes, it does. And it tends to be higher than the cruise estimates as well. A lot goes into that, specifically how a tree is bucked into logs. Different lengths and diameters will produce different board foot results. And then also what we've seen in the market recently over the last few years is utilization of a much smaller log than they typically would, which, you know, adds a bump as well.
Comments, questions?
A question, map question, it's the last map in our packet titled Proposed Geographic Scope of the Draft HCP. I'm interested in the red line that runs through Benton and Polk Counties. I'm on the Forest Land Classification Committee and we've been moving lines around within, within the boundaries. Is this red line that I'm looking at the same or similar to the blue line, which would be the eastern boundary for the ODF protected lands?
Yes, it is. And what those lines are for, just showing the sub-geographic areas that we have of our state forest land west of the Cascades. But the red line you are seeing does match up with what our district line is.
And for several years, there's been some discussion of adjusting that line. I think part of it goes through Corvallis and, and it's hasn't been moved in 60 years or whatever the figure is. And it's a legislative process, so not taken lightly is, is adjusting that, especially the eastern boundary, is that a project that's on, on your books?
Yeah, so it's important to note those are two separate processes. The Forest Land Classification work that you're involved in is, is not entailed with anything with state forests. That's primarily on the fire protection side of things. And yes, we are still working on a protection district boundary line change for our eastern boundary. There was some recent legislation through Senate Bill 762 that talks to fire protection. fire protection for, or determining what an adequate level of fire protection is for unprotected areas outside of O D F protection boundaries. So we're waiting to kind of see how that evolves over the next couple of years before we move forward with our district boundary line. But it's important to note that's a completely separate process from what we're talking about today and the line that's on the map that you see in front of you.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And I have a comment, just in case we have anyone watching on Facebook. There are a whole lot of acronyms in here. And so the best I can do, I can figure out F M P Forest Management Plan, H C P Habitat Conservation Plan, the E S A Endangered Species Act, H C A Habitat Conservation Areas, R C A Riparian Conservation Areas, the N I P A, the National Environmental Policy Act, E I S Environmental Impact Statements. If I get that all correct. Okay, anything else? I leave a name about.
No, and it's probably a good reminder for our end on these talking points moving forward. Maybe we just include a small section for what the, what the acronyms mean.
Perfect. Yeah, that'd be helpful. Other comments or questions?
Oh, go, go ahead. I have maybe a question for you, Commissioner Wise, just in terms of the Trust Lands Committee and the relationship with the Forest Trust Lands Group. How have, what's, what's the interaction there like these days? With O D F?
I guess, could you be more specific? Well, or maybe Mike would like to.
Yeah, I just know that many of the counties are still very frustrated with the H C P process. We were supportive of it and we indicated that support in a letter to Oregon Department of Forestry. But many of our colleagues still are very unsure or frustrated. And, and so that the Forest Trust Lands Counties venue is where those discussions are held and I've not attended. So I was just wondering about the tenor of those discussions, the state of play and whether we've engaged much from Benton County level at this point in time.
Sure. And I, I'm trying to remember if there, if I missed one recently or if I'm missing a future one anyway. I'm just one person, I would characterize some of the meetings a few months ago as more tense, there was more tension. And I think the more recent meetings have had a better tone and tenor. And I think people have been still sharing frustrations, but it's not quite as tense. That's just my takeaway. So, and I'm happy to chat off line about that too, if you'd like. All right, other comments, questions? Any other information that you would like to share with us?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I was going to mention, you know, we're still engaged with the Forest Trust Lands Advisory Committee. And things, so we're still actively working with that group as we, as we move forward, so.
I might mention one more thing on timelines. So the final E I S, the anticipated schedule is we're looking for a signed record of decision in February with publication in the Federal Register in March, an incidental take permits some, sometime in the spring of two thousand twenty-three as well. And we do have our, we are doing work to revise the implementation plans to ensure that our, our annual operations plans for twenty-four and twenty-five will fit within the constraints of the H C P.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you all for having us in front of you again. And as always, we're here to, to help and answer questions as you need to. So I think you all have my contact info. I know how to reach us, so just let us know if you need anything.
Oh, sure.
Different topic, but just thinking about wildfire season and, and information that you folks have and develop and that's why I wanted you to meet our new B I O if you hadn't already and wanting to get some of that information you have to other jurisdictions so that we can help get the word out and get regular community members more aware of what high fire danger means as far as activities that are permitted and not permitted and extreme. Folks that work in the woods know exactly what all those levels mean, but the rest of us, I think, could, could use some education and so hopefully have good cooperation between you folks and local government.
Yeah, yep. So my, my staff's already been working with your P I O staff already. And your staff have helped share some, some information of ours out. And I believe they're working on some more messaging that should be going out later this month. And I know in talking with your new P I O today, it sounds like he has some good plans. Don't know if we can get it done this year, but definitely for next spring, probably during wildfire awareness month in May. Of maybe even doing some more messaging as well, which will be good. So I appreciate your, your offer to offer those staff up to us. So far they've been able to help and I think we'll continue to work with them in the future moving forward. So I think it'll be good.
Well, great. And Corey Grogan, our B I O has a wonderful background in emergency management. So is knows some of the, the players involved already and is a real, I think, going to be a real asset for us.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're, we're excited. So I, I think they'll be able to do some good things and getting the word out to folks on the fire prevention side of things.
Commissioner Moon, I'd also like to interject, Corey Grogan, our P I O late yesterday afternoon sent me a update via email regarding our communication plan. That's been developed based on our work with O D F and I'll be happy to forward that onto the board. Great.
Yep. And I know some of that includes, I think, the use of those electronic reader boards you mentioned back in May. I think there's plans to put those out with some messaging on fire prevention as well, so.
And I didn't realize you called your colored signs the, the peacock sign.
Peacock signs, yeah.
That's a good image.
Yeah, yep. And we're trying to get more of those up as we can, so.
Well, and my idea on our reader boards is just reinforce that message or because you have so many locations and ours are, ours have wheels and so we can put them around in different, different spots.
Yeah, yeah. So no, we should be able to get good use of them, so.
And hopefully we'll have a nice, short, calm fire season.
Well, we've, we've been fortunate so far. This week's changed things a little bit with all the lightning we're getting statewide. But so far we're actually sitting in a really good spot. We'll see what the rest of August into early September brings us, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming today. We really appreciate your time and having you here in person. That's awesome. I just want to thank you also for the information that you provided ahead of time that's in our packet. It's very well put together, clear, concise. It's easy for me to get to through. So thank you, Mike. Nice to meet you in person, finally. And Michael, thank you for the tour the other day. That was great.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. And with that, I will call for a five minute break, so we will come back at ten nineteen. We will get started again. Next up on the agenda is Red Cross Wildfire Response Briefing. And we have with us Carissa, help you with your last one. The Executive Director, Southwest Army chapter of the Red Cross. Welcome.
Thank you. A pleasure to meet you all in person today. We connected last, last year virtually. So it's a pleasure to be here in person again. And what we wanted to do with Red Cross is really meet with the elected officials. Right now, we're kind of right now in wildfire season, but just kind of giving you a an update about what our response plans are, which is different than a little bit of what they were in two thousand twenty in regards to the, the sheltering component. And then also we wanted to share with you some information related to some of the overall all numbers from the two thousand twenty response and, and also some long-term recovery funding and how that's continuing to support some organizations. So we had done a briefing with all the, as many elected officials as we could at the end of June. So there was a specific meeting we held just for commissioners on June twenty eighth or ninth, I believe. We had done one for city managers and then county administrators and the separate one for mayors, trying to get as many local leaders informed kind of before we, we left into July. So what we want to really kind of, I always kind of say when, when Red Cross, people know of Red Cross, they, they know of us as blood and flood. You know, we show up to the big disasters like the hurricanes and tornadoes. And they know generally Red Cross does sheltering and they also know that we collect blood. But what I wanted to share because, you know, we were, I would kind of say not like a sleepy region before two thousand twenty, but we weren't really a high, we weren't Florida or Texas or California or Louisiana that gets hit year after year after year. So, you know, you never really saw us in motion because we were oftentimes elsewhere. But what we, what we thought was valuable, especially having gone through it, is just kind of explaining a little bit of the guts of our organization and how we do what we do, how, how we think through it. And so when we do respond to a disaster, there's all different levels. We rank it from one to seven, like a level one is anything less than ten thousand dollars, like a single family home fire, multi-family fire. And then a level four, you know, could be like a more of a divisional response and I'll get into that. And then like a level seven, which was the really big Oregon wildfire or Hurricane Laura that happened last year. So how we determine how big a disaster is, is looking at how many people are impacted. The number of homes that, you know, are damaged or destroyed. How many workers we think that will need to support this operation? The number of relief supplies is what that comes costs. The geographic scope and how long we think an event could last. And so we look at all of these figures and then we, we kind of make our determinations. So talking about sort of like the guts of the Red Cross, this is how we are designed. So we are a national organization. And the way that we work is within regions. So we have fifty regions across the country, but they're not fifty state, fifty regions because California is subdivided five ways because of population. Florida subdivided three ways because of population. And then there's larger regions like Idaho, Montana and the eastern four counties of Oregon. And we really made this alignment so that the regions overlap with the footprint for blood services. So that way our chapter act services really are mirrored image to blood because it makes it easier that way. So that way our chapter act services really are mirrored image to blood because it makes it easier that way. So within Oregon, we cover six counties of Southwest Washington as well as most of Oregon. When I was describing the levels of disasters, we have a level one and level two. Those are events that we would need to cover within our own region. So that could be a small wildfire response where we would mobilize a shelter, have some feeding, some basic supplies. That could be potentially a level two operation. We've had a lot of level twos. It could be winter storms, small wildfires, sometimes we open and close a shelter in two or three days. And that's a very typical event for us. A level three and a level four is what we call a divisional response. And that's where it exceeds our regional capacity. And we need more workforce and more equipment brought in. And that, like, we've had a few level three operations, which would have been like the Pendleton floods. And we had a three-week operation when, when we had historic rainfall that came down and washed out about 100 homes. We also had the Cheko Bar fire in Brookings several years ago. So we would have those every three, four years, kind of on average. And when it came to the Oregon wildfires, that was a level seven. So that went straight to the top because of the geographic scope and complexity of serving such a large geographic area. Benton County was spared for the most part. However, you did have, you know, evacuees coming into Benton County and then your systems were stretched because you were having to help, you know, support your neighbors. So when a national response is a five, a six and a seven. And again, it just kind of comes down to how many millions and millions and millions would it cost, you know, for that? So again, going back to our region, this is what our footprint looks like. And myself, I'm the executive director for Southwest Oregon. So the counties in the north are Lincoln Lynn and Benton County, and we stretch down from Lake to Curry. And we have both the humanitarian offices, we call ourselves chapter offices. So our main headquarters is in Eugene. And then we also have blood collections in Roseburg and other, other places. Portland is the distribution center for blood. So we do supply blood to 60 hospitals across the Pacific Northwest. So when you see, and there are quite a few blood drives that happen every day across Benton County. So the blood is transported to Portland. It's tested usually within about three days. It's kind of in a holding pattern and then it goes out to hospitals. What's really cool, as I like to say, is that about three weeks after you donate, you do get an email from the Red Cross telling you which hospital and what city your blood ended up, which is, I think, kind of cool. So that's our, that's our region. So talking about sort of, like I said, the guts of the, of what and how we do. We, as I also want to mention as well, we are a nonprofit organization. Sometimes people look at the Red Cross as quasi-governmental because we work alongside emergency management, both at the county, the city, county and state level. And then we also work alongside FEMA, you know, for the really big operations. But 90% of our workforce is volunteers. We've been around since 1880s and we're a nonprofit. We don't receive any government funds for the work that we do. So the care and comfort that we provide to residents that have been burned out, flooded, is through the generosity of our donors and the power of our volunteers. I mean, that's our mission. So we are a partner in disaster response and often, but we are not always the sole provider of sheltering. You know, we are a partner in. And when we look at how we scale up an operation, this is an org chart as an example of what a level two operation is. This is again, going back to a level two, this would be something like a small wildfire. So we would have, you know, like a assistant director of operations, a workforce, logistics, information planning, external relations and finance. So we kind of mirror our org charts with FEMA. You know, we often take a lot of FEMA classes because it's all, you know, under the mass care EF6. So when we get into a level five, six and seven, this turns into our org chart. And this was very, very much what was the org chart during Oregon wildfires. And I also want to mention 95% of the workforce during the Oregon wildfire was volunteer. So each of these positions here was the supervisor. And then under them, they had the managers and the associates. So again, mostly all volunteer, high percentage of it. So this just kind of shows you how we are able to flush out and respond. So when it comes to a disaster flow, because, you know, we hadn't, you know, as Oregonians, we hadn't gone through this before, you know, not, I mean, to such a large extent. So knowing what we do, how we do is really important to kind of know on the front end. And so ultimately, we, from the Red Cross, we are notified by county emergency management when there is an event, right? Your county knows what's going on. Your county EM or emergency manager will contact the Red Cross, our disaster program manager, and say, hey, there's this fire going on in this location and it's affecting like a thousand people. We need to, you know, we'll like, hopefully we'll have like a level one, level two, so like kind of put us on warning. Sometimes it just happens and you have immediate evacuations. So they say, can you set up a shelter here, right? They tell us, can you set up a shelter here? Then what we've done is we've over our, what we call blue sky days, when things are kind of hunky-dory, we get ourselves lined up for the gray sky events. And so we have a list of shelters that have, we've already done assessments to know what the capacity is in them. Now, just because we've done assessments doesn't mean they're available. I mean, we could use a church or we could use a school, but the schools are filled nine times, you know, nine months out of the year. So that wouldn't always work. But we do look for obviously a shelter location. Sometimes we, it goes both ways. Sometimes we have a temporary evacuation point. Sometimes it's just a rendezvous point, evacuate, go here, wait for more information because we don't quite know what's going to happen. Or it's an evacuation center, which we could eventually turn into a shelter. Again, we work with emergency management to figure out what that's going to be. If we do open up a shelter, that's where mass care kicks in. That's where we take care of the, you know, the sheltering, the feeding, the disaster mental health. People are scared. They had five minutes to leave their house. They don't know where their cat is. You know, husband, kids are in different areas of town. So that is traumatic, right? We have disaster mental health, disaster health services. So if, let's say you didn't get your medication or you didn't get your walker because you got tossed in the car and driven away. You need those. And so that's how we have disaster health services to help fill that gap, spiritual care and reunification services. So then as the disaster flushes more, it comes into a community engagement. This is when I start reaching out to you and I, you know, I would, I would call each, each one of you, you know, individually and say, just to give you an update, this is what's going on. This is how we're working. This is what it is. We work with the media and then the community oftentimes with the co-ads, you know, community organizations active in disasters are also, you know, kind of ramped in there. And then as the, as the flow kind of lessens, then we go into the recovery. That's what we do, the long-term assistance. That's where we do individual assistance if deemed necessary. Every disaster is different, just because it happened at one scenario might not, you know, make it another scenario. And then ultimately we kind of demobilize. As we are an immediate response organization, we're not a long-term recovery organization. I'll get a little bit more into that. So, you know, these are just some images here of the Oregon wildfires and the types of things that we had done. Actually, the upper left-hand corner, that was a temporary evacuation point at the state fairgrounds. So that was where they say, everyone rendezvous here and we'll figure out where to go. The second picture to the right is with everyone standing around. That was actually down in Jackson County where we have those emergency response vehicles and teams that were going to be sent out to do field distribution of supplies. Then we also had the wildfire kits. That was actually at the Lane County Fairground where, you know, and I've heard, I've spoke to a recovery group down in Jackson County and they gave the same kind of present or modified presentation. And they said that those wildfire kits were really meaningful to them because when their house completely burns down, they have, you know, they have the ability to at least use a rake and a shovel and a sifter kit to look for a gold rake or to look for a blade or to look for something that, you know, it gives them a little bit of mental closure and helps in that recovery process. And then also in the far upper right corner, that, because with the, with the towns of Talent Phoenix, so many of the population there was from the Latino community. We brought in staff and volunteers that spoke Spanish, that worked specifically with the Latino community, worked with the churches and the schools and the restaurants to really provide services for them. And then the bottom right-hand corner, because it was COVID, we had no choice. We had to hotel, you know, for isolation purposes was not, you know, we have never done hoteling before. It's expensive. It's wonky. It's, you know, it's just crazy. We had 80 hotels all across the region that all had individuals in it. So just a couple of snapshots there. I also wanted to share just, you know, this is a moment in time, right? This is 16 days after the first, after the Oregon wildfires happened to kind of show the scope and scale of what it was. So we had our first job director who was signing off after 16 days. And he wrote the summary email just to kind of give you, it was still very much the height of everything. We had 1,300 volunteers engaged, 96% of them were volunteers. 35% were first-time volunteers. I mean, people stood up and said, I want to help. They were delivering meals. They were putting cleanup kits together, doing all kinds of stuff for us. We had 20 congregate shelters because if we tried as much as we could to get hotel space, but we don't own hotels. We can't, you know, kick people out of hotels and make them into shelters. We don't control that, you know, but we had 80 congregate shelters. And if there wasn't space, we had to do congregate shelters in high schools and counties and serve 140,000 meals. This was just within the first 16 days. And you see on the map, we, it was such a large zone that we had to cover. We had to divide it into districts. So each district director could report up to headquarters and be a little bit more closer to the ground. So this is the summary of everything. We didn't break it down by county, by county, by county, what we did because it was the overall operation. But ultimately it was 115 days. Again, immediate startup and then with the number of staff, we had over 3,000 staff, 3,700 staff assigned to the job. And the Red Cross pays for individuals across the country to come here for two-week deployments. And then, and then ultimately we ended it at December 31st and passed it over to the state to kind of take over the needs. Now, what a lot of organizations, what a lot of people in general aren't aware of, because we've never gone through it before, is the fact that Red Cross provides long-term recovery support. So we, we ultimately, the overall cost of the operation was about $25 million. And then what we did is we reserved part of that money for helping the agencies on the ground doing the recovery work. Red Cross is not a recovered agency. We're not, you know, we just, that's not our specialization. But we have a lot of local groups that are doing that work. And so what they had done is that Governor Brown had designated the Oregon Community Foundation to be the designated foundation to receive public funds or foundation funds and process everything that way. And then what they did is they looked at, they received grants from all these organizations and then funded that using the money from the Red Cross. So we had given $3 million in a total of two phases to these agencies right here to do a number of groups. So this happened last year, kind of early this year and last year. So what we also did as well is we provided individual assistance to those that were affected. So if you, if you, if your house was destroyed or severely damaged, we paid, we opened up casework for individuals. In the first three weeks, we did was called just immediate assistance, like $450, anyone in shelters, not in shelters. We gave them the $450. And then four months later, we gave $1,100. And then a year after that, like ultimately like 15, 16 months after the event, we gave another $1,500. The reason why this is important is oftentimes people think, well, I'm not staying at the shelter. I'm not staying at the Red Cross hotel. I'm staying with my sister or I'm sleeping on my uncle's couch. Whatever it is, people say, well, I don't need Red Cross assistance. But you can still receive this benefit. You can still get medications replaced. You can still get mental health care. You can still have casework that can be supportive. So even though you're not directly being fed and housed in a hotel and you're staying with friends and family or your insurance is taking over, you're still eligible for it. And then ultimately, because of the Alameda fire was so extensive, we gave a half a million dollars to the Jackson County Long-Term Recovery Group to help with their unmet needs committee. And what the unmet needs committee does is they have, they work with the disaster case managers, working directly with clients, with the survivors, and saying, what, what are those roadblocks? You know, what do you need help with? It's like, well, I need to have, you know, a driveway page. It'll cost like $5,000 for that. And then I can get the permit to move in. The unmet needs committee would assess that request and then grant it through that money. So we provide the half a million in like February and they should have it spent by August. This is how kind of quick it's going. So the Oregon drought, you know, these were, these were images as of May. Thankfully, we had all the rains that kind of kicked the can down the road a little bit. But still, we are very much more in drought and you all know this. You know, from comparatively from 2021 to now, 2022, you see the red and the dark brown is just an ever bigger swath out there. And then of course, this is a September of 22 outlook about what the drought areas are going to be kind of across the country. And, you know, and this is also a graph that Noah had put out just showing the, the economic costs of disasters. Going back from 1980, you see, you know, the, you know, drought control and wildfires and those things. And then how it's just really boomed in the last, you know, 10 years or so. This is the trend that we see ourselves in. And as an organization that responds to disasters, we ourselves are adjusting ourselves to how we can meet multiple fronts. Not just, you know, back in the day when I started with Red Cross 12 years ago, we would have a big disaster every three or four years. And at the time, we threw everything at it. When we had Hurricane Sandy, we had every single IRV across the whole entire country driven over to New Jersey. And we did all the canvassing because we could and we had the facilities. Now we are managing three to four events, big ones at the same time, not including the smaller ones as well. So we're having to adjust ourselves. So operational speaking, what can you expect? Is we are returning to congregate sheltering. So when we do have, which is a good thing because one, it's a, it's a consolidated area. We have clients that way, you know, public health, you know, can, can be present, other agencies can be present. Feeding is going to be bulk feeding. We're not going to have individual meals that are put out there. Masks are required by Red Cross staff and volunteers. And so we are still masking ourselves like we do within blood drives as well. And then also that, you know, and, you know, we can't, I mean, society is open. We encourage masking because it's safer, but we won't deny anybody staying in a shelter. But our staff and volunteers, because it's our workforce, you know, and we have variants that are very much going around, are happening. So how are we preparing for, you know, this upcoming wildfire season? So we have a database called Volunteer Connection that our volunteers put in their availability in advance. So people say, I mean, for the most part, you know what your summer plans are. And you can say, I'm available these three weeks and those four weeks. And we put ourselves, our availability is already up to date. And of course, if there's a hurricane brewing, we get notice and then everyone goes in there, logs in their availability so that you pop up green. So when the, when the time comes and they start recruiting folks to go, that's already been covered. We've also been building our capacity for sheltering workforce. So just two weeks ago, I was down in Jackson County and we trained about 30 members from the Oregon Department of Human Services. So we trained their staff in being shelter workers. We've also done co-trainings with the, with Lane County, with, and Benton County as well. So we, we trained county staff members about how to open a shelter because, I mean, honestly, there's like, what if they're like Lincoln County or Curry County? What if the bridge goes out? What if there's a landslide and we can't get there? We have limited volunteers. Ultimately, the county is responsible for its residents. And so training partners and county just to maximize shelter workers can, you know, is, is a really great way. And then of course, we've been offering, you know, the field training guide. So ultimately, we can't do this alone, right? So how can you help us? Is so one is if you have networks on Facebook, you know, follow us on Facebook. Follow us on Red Cross Cascades. We just posted an update this morning, I believe it was. So with the fires that are happening in McKinney, with the McKinney fire down by Wyrika and the evacuations there, we opened up a shelter in Ashland to support the people evacuated. A lot of the people went south to weed. Some people went north and mostly they were like the Pacific Crest Trail hikers. They got evacuated off the trail. And so they've been coming through. And so they've been coming through the Red Cross shelter, staying for about a day, and kind of moving back on to the trail again. So we have a shelter opening that is open there now specifically for McKinney Fire. Help us make connections. So when something happens, like I remember when the Bootleg Fire happens, I received a call from a county commissioner who got a call from somebody else. And because we were so top of mind, because I had already emailed him and told him what was going on, he was like, hey, Carissa, I just got this call. Here's this person. I think it would be a good, good connection for you. And he got us connected, and it was an amazing connection. So you all know the networks and you kind of understand better about what we do, how we do it. And so, you know, help us and provide that. And then whenever you have tabling events with either, you know, the county tabling events or fairs or festivals, invite us to that for some outreach efforts. So one, we can, we have a program where we install free smoke alarms. We do fire education. We do free preparedness programs. Invite us to those, and even to your staff members. If you want to have a staff member to understand what is the Red Cross, you know, department heads, you know, whether it's, you know, public health or human services, you know, we're happy to come in and, and share what is the Red Cross, so people have a better understanding of what and how we, how we work. Help us re-recruit local volunteers, because everything starts local and ends local, right? National is not going to swoop in, you know, it takes days to mobilize. But the first people on the ground are ultimately locals that help us get it started and going. And then when we do have an event, you know, feel free to visit us at the work sites. Feel free to come by and take a tour through the shelter, so you can, you know, see what we're doing. And then I put together this, kind of the expectations of kind of during a disaster. So one is, you know, I'm your direct count, yeah, I'm your direct contact to the Red Cross. So I interface with all elected officials, you know, ma- major community leaders. So save my number in your phone. You know, that's how I called the three commissioners in Jackson County. I had them being, being, and being. I just talked to every single one of them real quick. They said, thanks for the update, you know, what's going on. So save my number and my email address in your phone. You'll get periodic emails from us when stuff is really happening. And then ultimately, Red Cross will have a representative in the county emergency management or state emergency management if something is declared. So we have a government liaison that really works and interfaces with your department heads. And that way, we can, we, you know, we have a seat at the table to help share information for that clarity. Ultimately, if you have any roadblocks, if you're, you know, stuff happens, it's disaster, you know, if you're not getting information or you're having a roadblock, you call me. It's like, hey, Carissa, I heard this, or I heard this over here, or this isn't quite happening, or what's going on here? You call me, and then I can help flush it out, because I'm your direct contact. If it is like a level five, six, and seven, that's when we mobilize what we call the elected official liaisons. We call them EOLs. And those are other executive directors like myself or my boss, like the regional executives, you know, who do this in their day jobs that come out to help me. So when we had the Oregon wildfires, we had five elected official liaisons that came out. But they're on two-week deployments. So you hear a lot of frustrations, and I, I completely get it. You're in the field. You're working a big disaster. You've been having this great relationship with Sue. And then Sue's from Kansas, and then she goes home. And now you have, you know, Joe, no, no offense, Joe. Now we have Joe. And but it's like, Joe doesn't know everything that Sue has, and the person just left and have to deal with someone else. Again, they're ninety percent volunteers, and they put their lives on hold for two weeks. And so I've deployed, you know, to California three times. I went to Hurricane Harvey. I tell people, I had seven people to backfill me. I got people at work that had to like pick up my, pick up my, you know, my, my, whatever I left behind. You know, I have a husband and a kid. I had grandparents that came. I had neighbors that helped out with childcare. You know, I had neighbors that fed the dogs, you know, I had those things in place so that I could go out and, and be able to help, you know, on the national level. And then ultimately, you know, it is a disaster. And so we like to have information as quick as we can, exactly where it is. But, you know, I always say it's sort of like the fog of war. When a fire happens and people are evacuating and everything is getting stood up, you're, as a county, is trying to figure it out. We're trying to figure it out. We're trying to get the best information we can as fast as we can. And so ultimately, it takes a little bit of time until, you know, we, we know what we're looking at. And especially on like a national operation, it takes time to deploy, because like when it all blew, that Labor Day weekend, it took us about two days to gather ourselves, right? And then we put the requests in the system for how much workforce we needed to be brought in. It takes day three, we put in the requests. Day four, they're being recruited across the country. Day five, they leave on twenty-four hours' notice. They fly across the country. And day six, they're on the ground. So that's like a week before we can get people from Kentucky and Louisiana and New York to come and help us. That's why I say everything starts local and ends local. So, you know, the cavalry does come, but it comes with a bit of a delay. And that's, you know, just, you know, helping manage those expectations when something really big does happen is helpful. And then ultimately, this is, we had a disaster academy in Salem. We hold this once a year. We had over two hundred Red Crossers that took online classes or in-person classes. They take classes to get what we call CAPS, like gaps, group activity positions, so that way I'm a shelter supervisor, or I'm a, you know, logistics somebody, or I'm a sheltering, you know, I do, I do feeding or bulk feeding. And so we have all these different positions that people have. So that way, again, when we deploy, you have your credentials of what you've taken classes of. So we get people promoted. We get people trained. And then these are Red Crossers all across the region. So that was up at the, at Willamette University. So that's just the end of my little presentation. Hopefully it was, I'm hoping for questions.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing all that with us and for giving us the information ahead of time. That's always helpful. It was helpful for me to know that people can still get benefits, even if they're not, you know, in those mass shelter locations. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, you, you are now in my phone.
Oh, good.
I wasn't, just doing other homework. Really appreciate the emphasis on practice. And I, I have a volunteer firefighting background in a very small district and hard to get people to show up. And because we, we had such few events, they were generally all completely different than the last one. And just, there's no substitute for practice. And so I, I hope we get emails about the annual training in Salem. It'd be nice to see what goes on there. I guess my other question, September twenty-twenty was a challenging event. I mean, usually, I, I assume you can, we can concentrate on an area and, and put resources to a particular area. And in that case, we could, because they were all basically up and down the Willamette Valley. I guess you, you've gone over some of it, but what, what, what did you learn from September twenty-twenty? And going forward, you might do things differently.
That was just an unprecedented year to have everything blow within two days. I mean, who knew that when you have multiple sites all happening, I think we had eleven different disasters all happening at the same time simultaneously. You know, we had, we had volunteers at every single location, but I mean, ultimately, you know, our capacity is only what it is. But as you can see with the numbers of what we did, we got people into hotels immediately. I mean, I, I was triaging calls, like from the beginning, putting people into safe places as, as, as fast as we could. I think the, like, you know, there's, there's obviously every lesson learned. Think all, you know, this is like a ma- a massive event, so we always have these big takeaways. But I think one of our big takeaways is really just kind of, you know, you know, being really clear with, like, partners about the role of the Red Cross and how we work. And, you know, doing presentations like this, I think is really helpful, kind of better understanding, you know, what all, and just managing expectations too. And, and ultimately, I'm doing the field training guides, like we are training capacities with other, you know, county and state officials and more volunteers. I mean, people get it now. Now I, I have conversations with people. They're like, oh, my gosh. I, I, I know someone who was affected. It's personally impacted me. They get it now. And so I think that's really kind of helpful. And, and, you know, preparing ourselves for the next one.
Okay, well, I really appreciate you reaching out and bringing us up to date. So, thank you.
It's always good. Just have me in your phone.
Thank you. Well done. Other questions or comments?
I really appreciate the presentation also. I know we were a little bit peripheral, although we helped provide support. Our emergency team was fantastic in that way. So just the larger context is useful, and to know how long it takes to deploy people from across the country is also very helpful.
Yeah. It's just the reality.
Especially in a big event when there's so much happening at once. We have to be able to do it ourselves.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much. Once again, we appreciate your time and thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move into our board meeting. And we have already done the consent calendar. We will move on to proclamations. And we have today proclamation and recognition of the week of August seventh through thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, is National Community Health Centers Week with Carla Jones. Carla, if you'd like to come up here, please, and thank you. Thank you for your patience today.
Again, my name is Carla Jones. I'm the Health Center Director for the Community Health Centers of Benton and Lynn Counties. I'm here today to read a request for proclamation. August seventeenth through thirteenth is National Community Health Centers Week. The National Association of Communities Health Centers recognizes the great work that its community health centers do across the nation. So I'm here before the Board of Commissioners in the matter of proclaiming August seventh through thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two as Community Health Center Week in Benton County. The month of August, we will be celebrating the work of community health centers. This year, community health centers, "the chemistry for strong communities," quote unquote, is the theme. This recognizes the important contribution health centers make, providing access to affordable, high-quality, cost-effective healthcare for medically vulnerable and underserved people in our community. In the United States, health centers have made great strides in the healthcare system by assuring access to affordable healthcare, maintaining high standards of accountability, demonstrating cost-effectiveness and efficiency in the delivery of care, and helping communities address unmet health needs. And to reduce preventable deaths and costly disabilities. The Community Health Centers of Benton and Lynn Counties are medical homes to nine thousand people with over forty-three thousand five hundred visits over the last calendar year. Our community health centers offer care at six locations in Benton and Lynn Counties. Four of those are in Benton County. In the past year, the community health centers continued to develop patient-centered primary care teams and invest in an integrated model of service delivery that incorporates primary care, behavioral healthcare, substance use treatment, prevention and wellness care, health education, and dental services. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that August seventh through thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two is Community Health Center Week in Benton County, and all residents are encouraged to join in this observance.
Thank you. Your motion.
I'll move to proclaim August seventh through thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two is Community Health Center Week in Benton County. And that's proclamation B twenty-twenty-two, days zero one four.
Second. All those, if they ever say, I, 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 motion curious.
Thank you. I'd like to finish by just offering the, some information about how we will be celebrating community health centers. This, we actually will be celebrating it over the course of the whole month of August, but for this week specifically. All of our events can be found on the National Association of Community Health Centers websites. And that is at HTTPS colon backslash backslash healthcenterweek.org/events. And we will be hosting some tables and booths at the Corvallis Farmers Market and at the Albany Farmers Market. And we will also be hosting a couple of sports physical events and health fairs at all of the schools in Corvallis. So, or sorry, excuse me, for, for all of the schools in Benton County that we're connected with. So the LC Health Center Fair will be on August ninth. We will also be hosting one in Monroe on August eleventh. And then we are also part of the Corvallis School Health Fair for all of, all of Corvallis School five oh nine J districts on August twenty-sixth. And then we are also participating in Oregon or Open Streets of Corvallis, the, in some neighborhood activities. Our twenty-seventh street location, commonly referred to as the HSB Building, is right on the same path as the Corvallis Streets. So we'll be hosting some fun neighborhood activities. And then on August twenty-sixth, we will be sending out an invitation to our community health center workforce and Board of Commissioners, County Administrator, and our Community Health Centers Board members in honor and recognition of the work that they've been doing over the past year and sharing some information that displays some of that hard work from a data perspective. So please look forward to that invitation, and thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that. All right. And with that, we can move on to old business. Next up, item seven point one, Justice System Improvement Program Space Use in Courthouse slash District Attorney's Offices Planning. And we have with us Nick Kirth, our JSIP manager, Lori Coppenrath, and Mitch Heine. And we see a Justin Stranzl, DLR Group. So we will give them one moment to get situated. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm the Chair, County Administrator, County Council. So I am joined here today by Lori Coppenrath, Mitch Heine from DLR Group. And let's so kind of objectives for today's discussion. Thank you. So first and foremost, really important milestone, we're kind of approaching the end of our space use planning across all of the JSIP facilities. This has been a, a two-year project. The DLR Group has been leading as part of their pre-design work. And really, the importance of it relative to next steps is that this, this draft space use plan will really drive final costing. And as you know, costing is of critical importance in all phases of, of construction, but especially now, so with so much volatility. So this costing will really help us, help you hone and make decisions relative to the, the final bond package that we'll be contemplating and deciding on later this, this year. So that's the importance of space use. And, and of course, it's going to drive design as well. So I will be asking DLR to talk about that here in just a minute. And secondly, we, we do have a minor or small Uh, and secondly, um, we we do have uh, a minor or small remaining space use issue uh, to to resolve. So. Wanted to have that that on the table and uh, you know, discuss uh, kind of well, define it. And then uh, hopefully, we can get that resolved uh, this coming week. Uh, and then also open up discussion about um, including District Attorney Offices as part of the new courthouse project. And that that's also an important milestone uh, for a different reason. Uh, since the Board of Commissioners made the decision to move forward with uh, the new courthouse. Uh, in part to uh, take advantage of our state matching funds and not lose them. Uh, it it it, we're at a point where we're about to bring on uh, architect, engineering firm. Uh, move into design uh, and you know, start start moving forward. And and so that timeline is. Uh, is upon us. And so uh, if we are going to include uh, District Attorney's Offices as part of that courthouse. A new courthouse project, we need to make the decision so that the architect knows what to design and we can start laying out the. Uh, the Community Safety and Justice Campus accordingly. So that's that's kind of the other important uh, point. Not looking to make a decision today on that point. We're coming back on Friday morning, but did want to open it up to discussion. Um, set the stage, answer any questions. So with that, I'm going to uh, turn it over to uh, Lori and Mitch and Mitch invite you to come up here. And talk about uh, space use planning to date.
Hi, I'm, thank you.
Great. Thank you for having us again. We appreciate your time and letting us talk about this project, which we very much um. Have put a lot of energy and effort into. So as Nick mentioned, this has been a two-year journey. I'm going to summarize the two-year journey with this chart in terms of space. I don't need to take you through every detail, but for each of the projects, we started. Uh, each of the buildings, we started with a wish list for everybody, a best practices wishlist. Understanding that we overlaid um, some space standards that we showed you last time, um, as well as just modern. Things that none of your facilities really understand at this point, right? So um, as we walked through, we looked at the current space usage. So we toured all the facilities and understood how they use their space currently. Um, and then we moved on to what we're calling the Wish List Grow Square Footage, but really that's just if we could have everything we wanted in a building that would make us run the most efficiently and most effectively. And have a few perks in there. Um, that's the square footage is that they um, we came up with. And they're not too different from where we ended up now. Because um, I want to commend all of the people that we work with. They were very restrained in what they asked for. They asked the. We find that um, government agencies tend to have a disease called make do, the make do disease, and they're just. Everybody gets really proud and ingrained in the idea that what we can make do with anything, we can make it work. And that's just. Uh, government agency mentality. Um, so in order to help move them off of the make do-ness. Um, there there was some, a lot of conversations that happened over the course of those two years. And so um. The Wish List Grow Square Footage um, was adjusted a bit over time. So we know that for the Crisis Center, for example, there was a very limited amount of money available. So we adjusted that square footage to what they needed to be still be a best practice facility for what they were serving. But reduced how much they were provide in terms of services they were providing. So we didn't have a twelve sixteen-bed unit. We had a. You know, a smaller unit and we only had five or six day beds as opposed to the as many as we had originally planned, but we also planned that it could be expanded in the future. Um, the courthouse stayed pretty much about the same because that's a, there were some prescriptive space standards that we had talked about and we followed all of those. Um, I'm going to skip the District Attorney's Office just for a moment. The Correctional Facility planned for a hundred and twenty um, beds. Um, as well as best practices that includes providing some viewing gardens to allow there us to have some views to nature for he the healing benefit and treatment benefits of that. As well as appropriate staff space, so staff locker room, staff um, spaces to support those folks. Um, the Sheriff's Office is an interesting one. Um, the fact that we've kind of pulled the EOC out of it, but um, when we first looked at the space needs. We were still in very first space needs. We were still envisioning them being co-located with the Corvallis Police Department. So they were sharing some functions like evidence and records. Since then, we've pulled them apart and we've now needed to provide square footage for evidence and records and those sorts of things. So. That's why their square footage hasn't changed tremendously, um, other than the fact that we've pulled that um, EOC function out and and called it out as its own thing. Um, so the District Attorney, originally, the District Attorney was looking at um, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. That included. A twenty-four hundred square foot space of future growth that was not defined. It was just put in there as future growth. That's what. Um, we thought the staffing levels might get to in twenty years and then they'd be able to expand into that space. Since then, um, we've been given a parameter from the county about how mu- if we're including. The District Attorney in the courthouse upfront, you only have so much money that you can borrow. We were given the number of eight million dollars, which we'll see on the next slide. And for that, we think we can get about nine thousand square, grow square feet of space. And we've been working with the DA. Um, quite a bit to. Understand what the space is, will go into that nine thousand square feet and then what additional space might be needed outside of that. Um, building footprint. I want to take a moment here just to go back to the point that I've tried to make every time. We're being conservative with our assumptions in terms of square footage. The market's a little wonka doodle right now and we want to make sure that. We're serving you the best with your funds. And so there is a chance during design, when you hire a design architect, that we might be able to fit all of that other um, DA space and to get him up to maybe ten thousand square feet of space. Into the design at that point, but right now we're being conservative and trying not to um, make promises we can't deliver on. So. Um, just to be very clear, we're being conservative with our square footage assessments.
And so I might just add that that uh. Possibility applies to all of the facilities we're contemplating, but once we get into design, we we could be happily surprised. Uh, the. Point DLR is making is they don't want us to be unhappily surprised. So.
Right.
Laurie, I do have a question for you. Uh, when you use the word conservative, there's been a number of. Figures that we've used per square foot. And so can you uh, specify more directly the uh, price per square foot that you're using?
Sure. So generally speaking, over the whole project, we're looking at about a thousand dollars a square foot total project costs. Um, initially, the courthouse will be a little bit more because you're building most of the infrastructure, the drive lanes and all that sort of stuff and a lot of parking for the facility and utilities. So that's why the courthouse is the first project. It doesn't matter if it's the courthouse or if it was the correctional facility. The first project is going to have a higher cost per square foot because of the site development. Um, but generally speaking, we're using a thousand. We think that some generic, more generic office space like the DA's office could be as low as eight hundred. But still, we're sticking with a thousand just to make sure that we're covering everything we will need to do with those funds because. While our cost estimators are telling us that there may be another eight to ten percent inflation in just this year alone to finish the year. After that, they're thinking we'll be back at four percent. But we didn't think we'd have a pandemic either. So we're trying to be very mindful of your monies. But generally, a thousand square feet, a thousand dollars a square foot total project cost. Any other questions? There are comments or questions at this point? And so as I said, um, we've been given the task of providing as much. Space for the for the DA, if the DA is to be included with the courthouse as we can for eight million dollars, and that's how we got there. Um, so we've worked with the DA and um, aligned on about nine thousand and forty-eight gross square feet. Um, but there are some spaces, specifically the medical examiner spaces, that don't fit into that shell. So um, the DA will be looking for some square footage relatively close to the new site. Um, to provide that square footage. And the thousand square feet is based on general office um, parameters. So providing uh. Off for offices, essentially some storage space. That's a net square footage, meaning measuring inside the walls of the room. Is about six hundred square feet, but to understand circulation and that sort of thing, um, gets you up to about a thousand square feet. Now, if you. Put them into an existing office, county office space that already had copiers and restrooms and break room and stuff like that, you'll probably get closer to the six hundred square foot number. Um, if you needed to provide some of those other amenities, then you'd probably get closer to the thousand square foot number um. For somewhere. Close to the north side.
Well, just to make the point that uh, plan this week is to continue to uh, engage with the DA and see if we can work through some possibilities. Uh, options relative to existing uh, office space, counting on the office space uh, or. Or other solutions that, you know, can uh, deliver this remaining uh, space needs.
I know that one of the other lingering questions was uh, where community corrections was going to live? Is that um, figured into the square footage um, projections?
So pre-trial services, basically, is that what we're talking about?
No, I I, my understanding was from some of the conversations that it wasn't clear whether community corrections would be in the sheriff's office or remain somewhere else or. Pro-ahivation.
Oh, pro-ahivation's in the um, sheriff's office.
It is.
Yeah, those square footages are in.
Okay, okay, because the last time I asked, that was not the case. So, thank you.
Those square footages are included in the sheriff's office. We've asked a number of times if we want them to be. Co-located with the sheriff or not co-located with the sheriff, and they've always said we want the pro-ahivation with the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
It's about seven thousand square feet.
Okay, appreciate that clarification.
Sure.
I have a question on the last bullet point. Uh, county staff will work with DA to identify options and reach resolution if possible. Can we explain that the if possible, because it seems like that we have to find a resolution one way or the other. There's no. We're going to leave it up in the air and not make a decision.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. Uh, certainly, our our objective is to find a solution. Um, I I think based on conversations that we've had offline, if if we if we can't agree on a solution, the intent is to come back to council. And present the best set of options that we can come up with and uh, leave the decision with you at that point.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone, did you?
Well, I.
Or question?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
I I appreciate the efforts and and it's nice to get. Um, things clarified and pinned down so that uh, we don't have so many options floating around. So. I'm glad to. Have made uh, good progress to get to where we are now.
You have a further question? Um. Given uh. The fact that funds are tight and we can't borrow an unlimited amount of money, um, just as the county. I guess we're looking at this and seeing that um, there are other potential space needs. We could invest the eight million in different places. So. Uh, we haven't put together those alternatives. I'm asking this just as a hypothetical, only because um, we have to really consider all uses of scarce county dollars. Um, so have you as a planning and space um, space planning group thought about? Those other space needs, what what? And the use of those funds, that borrowing leverage?
Uh, yeah, we certainly have, and and maybe we could go to the next slide first, if if I may. Um, I guess what I'd like to first uh, uh, address is, you know, why it might make sense. Uh, why it does make sense to move forward with uh, the courthouse DA spaces. And then I can answer your question, Joe, as well. Uh, can weigh in on on what some of the other considerations are, really. Um, you know, so first of all, uh, certainly having the the DA uh, and the courthouse co-located aligns with best practices. Uh, that that's no surprise. It's been discussed uh, since, you know, we had our uh, technical advisory committee. Um, it it certainly creates operational efficiencies. There's there's no doubt if they're co-located, that's the. Uh, that's the most uh, efficient way to conduct your business. It's the probably the best uh, public service as well. So it's not just about dollars. It's also about. Uh, the, you know, delivery of services. Um, from a uh, construction project cost perspective, uh, really, the dollars aren't um, uh, driving in that respect. So. Were you to build a a separate envelope DA on the same timeline? Uh, or roughly the same timeline as the courthouse project, you can see, you know, three hundred and fifty to half a million dollars in savings. I'm not. I'm not saying that's insignificant, but it's not, it's not millions of dollars on an eight million dollar project. Um, that five-year projection, that really factors in that four percent growth that is anticipated. Uh, as well as the time cost of money. So uh, that that second bullet point is really about the time, uh, more than it is. Uh, changing of the project per se. And certainly, you know, uh, I have heard Commissioners express, you know, concerns about uh, the seismic. Uh, challenges, limitations really of the historic courthouse. Uh, we know they exist. So. Uh, were we to move uh, concomitantly with the the uh, the new courthouse and DA's offices, it it moves that staff to. A modern facility that won't have those seismic challenges. So. So these are, you know, many good reasons for moving forward with the project. Um, let me pause there. Just ask first, ask if there are any questions about kind of the the pros.
I am confused. The bullet that says construction project cost savings versus individual courthouse and DA's. So is that saying that if they're built together, we're saving money? But that it says below, if they're individual projects. So not together, then there's a savings.
Yeah, basically, the the point is if you if you build them together, there's there's a savings. So so that that immediate savings, if you were to build them as one envelope. Uh, you're going to save in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars. Okay, if you were wait, if you were to wait five years to do that. Uh, cost savings is more like a million and three-quarter to two point two million. So that it's just trying to show you that. Oh, the longer you wait, the more expensive it becomes to do the projects individually.
Okay, so this is the savings, that's the savings versus doing them that way. I got it. I was thinking about it the opposite way.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, exactly. In terms of addressing, um, you know, what some of the other possibilities and considerations are, I'm going to, I'm going to invite Joe to to share his, some of his thoughts. Um, we have had some discussions on this and I'll uh, I'll chime in as well.
Sure, thanks, Nick. Uh, Commissioners, uh, relative of the question that Commissioner Israel. Posed the, just refreshing your memory a little bit, on two separate occasions, maybe even three, over the course of the last. Six or eight months, Rick Crager, our CFO, has been in front of you talking about our borrowing capacity and what he recommends. Um, would be our maximum borrowing, if you will, based on a risk tolerance model. I see Commissioner Malone pulling out that that particular slide that we can all uh, remember. And uh, but suffice it to say that Rick Crager, our CFO, uh, has indicated that his comfort level regarding risk tolerance is around thirty-three million dollars. And we know that the courthouse project, which was originally envisioned uh, at forty million. Uh, and half would be paid by the county and half would be paid by the state. We now know because of the cost that Lori referenced a little earlier. That we would um, that we're really no longer at a forty million dollar project, but we're at a fifty million dollar project. And so a half from the county, twenty-five million, half from the state, twenty-five million. Uh, we know that the county is going to borrow that twenty-five million, has been our strategy all along for the courthouse. Uh, and now uh, following the best practices model and the board has said twice, you want to include the DA's office in the courthouse. Uh, that twenty-five million uh, versus the thirty-three million, which is the maximum. That our CFO is telling you we should borrow, really leaves that eight million dollars. And so the question is, and we've been making the assumption over the last month or two, that that eight million dollars. Uh, based on the best practices, based on what the board has said, that you would like them combined. Uh, we've been trying to work with that eight million dollars, and that's really where Lori comes into play. And all of the work that she's been doing, not only with John Haroldson, the DA, but also with Chris Westfall uh, from the 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 courts. And so. We've really worked diligently trying to fit all of this together. And so we've really worked diligently trying to fit all of this together. And we're close, but we're not quite there. The the question about, well, how else if we didn't spend the eight million dollars on the DA's office to be part of the courthouse? What would we do with that eight million dollars of borrowing capacity? We have not done an exhaustive evaluation of other alternatives. But I can tell you, ju- just on a basic level, you could either save that borrowing capacity by not spending it on the DA. Once again, that's not in concert with the best practices model, but you could not spend that eight million dollars and you could save that eight million dollars for another another project. You could dedicate that eight million dollars towards an EOC. You could dedicate that money potentially in some way to a down payment on a correctional facility. So we haven't done an exhaustive evaluation and we're not suggesting that we try and pivot to something else at this point. But I do think it's important for the board to recognize whether or not it's the DA's office or the courthouse that Rick Crager, our CFO, is recommending that we don't exceed thirty-three million dollars worth of borrowing. And, you know, if we go to the thirty-three million dollars, you know, just know that that in the future may impact other projects that we're looking at trying to accomplish where we may need to borrow money. But as the DA and I were talking last night, you know, we don't have a mandate to, for example, build an exhibit exhibit hall. There's not a mandate in state statute at the fairgrounds to do a project like that where there is a mandate to provide space for the district attorney within the Oregon revised statutes. So I'm not sure, Commissioner, if that answers your question or if you have more specifics you'd like to know.
No, I appreciate that answer. It it's it's always difficult, but you know, when I first began this work, my understanding was that a district attorney's office was a part of the courthouse. And they were an integral functional unit. And we really can't, if we invest in one part of the system and not another part of the system, we're not going to get the gains that we hope for in terms of best practices, either in terms of programs and approaches or in terms of facilities. So it it's it's still my goal to invest in district attorney space. And it's very frustrating to me that the state has a mandate that we provide it, but they provide no funds for it. Whereas they do provide a fifty percent match for the court space. Not only that, but they have a very skewed idea of what court space should be. It's incredibly generous, which puts another cost burden on counties. So this is a matter that I I hope to talk to legislators about moving forward. It might not help us, but other counties that follow us and using these state funds for courthouse replacement are going to face the same issue in terms of accommodating accommodating their state-elected employee, the district attorney, and the staff.
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, Joe, I appreciate the summary of possibilities. At some meeting fairly recently, there was a discussion of shared space with the courthouse and the DA. That the courthouse is fairly generously in terms of space. And I hope that's being pursued to maybe alleviate some of the space shortage that the DA is currently talking about. But just in your savings, if we do it immediately and what it would cost in five years. I remember a discussion on the correctional facility and we were at something around twenty-four million dollars, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. And we we were at fifty million dollars. And now we're at sixty million dollars for approximately the same thing. So I I think that kind of inflation and punishment, if you wait, I think should be part of our discussions going forward. It's we we have a large project in in front of us and yeah, I I think we need to get as much into it as we can in in this in the current effort.
Thank you. And I will just share. You know, the the question before us is, should we use the eight million dollars? As the county administrator highlighted, the board has consistently said over time that we do want to co-locate the DA's office with the courthouse. And the question was, how are we going to pay for it? And we did the surveys, the community surveys, which found out that community members are not likely to want to pass a bond to pay for it. So then the question was, where do we scrape up this money from? You know, for me personally, I would rather not take that extra eight million dollars out, but I feel like we don't have any other options. So for me, I wouldn't want to try to find a different use for it. It's really the most important thing is trying to get the DA in there. How do we do it? Here's the eight million dollars. So for me, I am still a yes for co-locating and I'm a yes for spending that eight million dollars. Other comments or questions or?
Thank you.
Is there, do you have any other information for us or is there anything else that you need from us at this time?
No, not today. Thank you.
And Commissioners, it was our plan to come back to you on Friday to give you an update as to what additional progress has been made regarding this other thousand square feet that Nick mentioned. I believe that's still our intent and I'm looking to DLR and staff to see whether or not there are going to be ongoing dialogues between now and Friday.
True.
So just to clarify, expectations for Friday's meeting, we will be receiving more updated information. And what decisions are we being asked to make at that meeting?
I would propose we have a formal decision made relative to including the DA as part of the new courthouse project, so would queue that up. And then also, if we haven't resolved mutually agreeable solution for the thousand square feet that is under consideration, that we also resolve that on Friday as well.
Okay. Do you, does that work for you? Is there anything else you would?
Absolutely. I think we're moving forward. It is really important, as I explained to the district attorney. This, I'm hoping that this process hasn't feel rushed. But I can tell you, DLR has been working diligently behind the scenes for the last couple of months, trying to get us to a point where we can have a footprint that we can all agree to for the new courthouse. And as Lori mentioned, you know, we're going through a process right now of considering bids in response to an RFP relative to bringing an architect onboard. And we anticipate that that this decision will be made here in the next week or so and that we'll have an architect onboard by the end of August. We do have a critical timeline relative to construction that we're trying to meet. And we also have a critical timeline regarding the twenty-five million dollars worth of funding that is coming from the state. And so when I say feeling rushed, you know, this is really a decision that needs to be made on Friday, if at all possible, in order to keep us in sync with those other timelines I just mentioned.
Thank you. And just to verify that that meeting will be Facebook live streamed?
That's correct. We have asked John to be here and so we will be providing that on Friday.
Thank you. And it's at eight thirty AM. Do I have that correct?
Eight thirty to ten AM is what we have it slated for. We do have a hard stop commissioners at ten AM for the forest tour that will be going on.
All right. Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, a couple of things. When it's ready, I'd love to see, I think you call it a test fit, what where different facilities might go on on the site and then a new improved timeline for what what needs doing. Part of that comes out of a conversation with Gary Stockoff and concerns about getting on the site and keeping keeping things moving. I I mentioned before the appraisal that we were scheduled to get in March came in and late July, I call that slippage. And and just so we have so we have a good idea if we're doing okay as far as timeline or if we need to try to pick up the pace. I think that would be helpful going forward.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide both. In fact, we'll be reviewing and updated site master plan on August sixteenth with the executive committee. So should be able to share that with with all of you shortly after that. And happy to update the timeline accordingly. I I do think we're in good shape as long as we can make the decisions before us that we've discussed today, this week. That's part of the urgency for making them, but at this point, we're we're doing well relative to courthouse timeline.
Perfect. And I believe I did hear Commissioners agree that we will be moving forward with the or the intent is to move forward with co-locating, but we will officially make that decision on Friday.
Commissioners, also, is there additional information that you need on Friday that we need to be preparing for you as we try and make a final decision? Is there any more information at all that you need from DLR, from Nick, from myself?
Thank you for that question. Can I have a little bit of time to think about it?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
If there is additional items that you need us to prepare, please, you know, email Nick with a copy to me.
And when, by the end of the day or what, when? When do you need those by?
Yeah, as soon as possible. Because we, yeah, we're on a quick turnaround, obviously. I do want to also ask Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Malone, you made a a comment relative to you were hoping that discussions were occurring regarding the potential sharing of square footage between the courts and the DA. I think it would be good for maybe Lori to characterize those conversations and kind of where we ended with that. I know you've met with the DA, I know you've met with the courts numerous times. And so any additional insight you can provide the board would be useful.
Sure. So I've had meetings with both the DA and the courts together and separate, talking about what spaces they might be able to share, keeping in mind that we want to keep conversations that happen, say, in a break room, compartmentalized between those two organizations, right? Because that'd be a conflict, people wouldn't feel free to talk about work or whatever at a break space or not. So the spaces that we've seen as shareable at this point include some meeting space, like a lactation room, public restrooms, things like that. We're not sharing, as I said, the break room or other things where there's kind of more congenial kind of conversations happening. That being said, those are those spaces that we're sharing with the courthouse are assumed to go into a future potential addition to the DA's office that is needed. Because even though we've gotten the DA to fit into about nine thousand square feet, their true space need is almost twice that number. So just keeping in mind that there is a an understanding that if there were to be money to do a future phase, the DA would need that. But we are, we have looked at all options about what spaces we can chair, understanding, for example, jury assembly or one of the courtrooms could be available for some training or, you know, larger need spaces for the DA's office. Because originally, they did have a pretty good-sized training room in their space list. But we're assuming those can be shared as well, so we're not building another three thousand square foot room for that. So those conversations have all happened and have been quite in depth.
Great. I appreciate that. Thousand dollars a square foot.
Thousand dollars a square foot.
See, let me add that up, yeah.
When I started my career, it was a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
Wow.
Well, we had a time machine.
Yep.
Just to clarify my understanding, did you say that anything that will be shared will then also be slated for a future like phase two?
Yeah, as time goes on and the, you know, we have about a twenty-year planning horizon on this project. You can't really make many assumptions past that. We would assume that the courthouse needs would come up as well as the DA needs would both come up. And so that additional space would be needed in the DA's future phase.
Perfect. Thank you. That was my understanding. I just wanted to double check. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time today and helping us out with this.
Sure, thank you.
All right, that takes us to others. Is there anything else for the good of the order today? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at eleven forty-one AM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great afternoon.